This time I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to note on that agenda? If not, we're operating under that agenda. The first item, then, would be to consider the acknowledgement of the Visit Marshall donation for the Legion Field improvements. Cassie, are you going to handle that? With us tonight is Cassie Weiss from Visit Marshall Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So Visit Marshall voted at our last board meeting that we would donate $40,000 to the city of Marshall for the Legion Field updates. So we just appreciate everything that Parks Department does for us. Preston, always going above and beyond. So we just wanted to give back, and we look forward to the experience it will give visitors once it's done.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Preston, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Sorry. Thank you, Cassie, and I just wanted to recognize Visit Marshall and C V B for not only their support in this project, but also numerous other projects that we do throughout the year, like Inclusive Playground. They've helped with that, and also joint purchasing on some equipment that we use. That helps Red Baron, helps some of the stuff they put on, helps for special events. We can rent it out. There's many different things. And there'll be more projects in the future, but very generous of them, and appreciate Cassie and the board's support for this. And we did finally get some conceptual drawings, so I threw them in there for you guys, just to look at when you have time. Just as kind of an update. So, thanks, Cassie.
And Cassie, do you want to come back up? So there's, Visit Marshall's been involved in a lot of activities, including nearly every weekend, you have an upcoming activity, the Community Bingo. You want to promo that at all?
Yeah. So Sounds of Summer and Visit Marshall are going to put on Mega Bingo, I think we're calling it, at the Red Baron Arena on June 8th. Doors open at 5:00, and bingo starts at 6:00. And then the Hitching Post will be there, serving pulled pork sandwiches and having a cash bar as well.
So what's the top prize?
I think just cash.
Well, how much?
Oh, I don't know. Depends on, yeah, how many people come. Last year, we had a lot, and Bob and Sharon both called last year, so hopefully we can do that again.
I was not invited back.
Uh-oh.
Sure was an oversight. Jim, I'm just speculating, but for people who would like maybe go to a casino or whatever, I can believe that you would probably not invest anywhere near the amount in buying bingo cards to play bingo, as you would in an average visit to an average casino. So I'm just, and then you wouldn't have to travel.
I would note, Sharon, there's, if you're a guest caller, there are a rulebook that you have to review.
Found that out.
She was a little quick.
Thank you, Cassie.
There is controversy.
There was a lot of controversy. That's why she wasn't asked.
Call the number on the bingo wall.
See, we appreciate your work, so thank you very much.
Perhaps you should have cameras over the bingo caller?
Alex does that for us.
All right, good.
Agenda item number two, then, would be consider the approval of the minutes from the last regular council meeting that was held on May 9th. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections?
I move approval.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. To approve the minutes as they have been presented, we will move to a vote. And close the voting. And the motion does pass. Did you abstain?
No, I voted.
We'll note that Councilmember Elkhorn voted in favor. The next set of agenda items are public hearings. There's three public hearings, and I'll make just a few comments. All these public hearings are on, are on the assessments on various street projects, so three separate projects. So the process that we'll go through is that we will have a short presentation about the process for the assessments, and then we'll open it up for public input. If any member of the audience that's an effective property owner or others want to make a comment, I will ask that you come up and use the microphone, because then it will be able to be heard on the broadcast of this meeting. And also give your address as well as your name. So, and then following that, we'll open it for any questions or comments that the council has, and then we will consider the adoption, following the public hearings, the adoption of the, of the resolution that would be relayed to the proposed assessment. So with that, agenda item number three, then, is the project for South First Street, Greeley Street reconstruction. Once again, we will start with a public hearing on this assessment. I'll call on Jason Anderson, who was the Director of Public Works, City Engineer, to conduct this public hearing. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. The project in question here, South First and Greeley, was completed last construction season. We've compiled all the costs and the cost breakdown. The project cost total was $1,904,144. Of those costs, 20.3% of those costs were assessed to property owners. 18% were paid by the city general fund. 5.6% broken down to surface water management utility. 36.2% of cost to Marshall Municipal Utilities. 19.9% of the cost to the wastewater fund. You do have that cost breakdown in your packet, as well as a project area map in the full assessment role and the resolution adopting the assessment. Per policy, the interest rate for the assessments is 4.1%, which is 2% over bond rate. Assessments are proposed to be payable over an eight-year term. The entire project was assessed per our special assessment policy, and if there are any questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Is there a member of the, of the audience that's here that wishes to speak as part of this public hearing? Anyone? Do you, any member of the council have input? Before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, anyone wish to speak as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close this public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Are there any questions about that resolution? Would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number four is Halber Road Reconstruction Project. Once again, we'll have a, a public hearing on the proposed assessment, and I would call once again on Jason Anderson to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The Halber Road Reconstruction Project was also a 2022 construction season project. Complete reconstruction of Halber Road and water and, or excuse me, sanitary sewer and storm water replacement as well, minor water work. Total cost was $1,302,340. Of that total, 27.5% of the costs were assessed to property owners, 27.4% paid through city general fund, 22.4% surface water management utility, 1.5% of cost to Marshall Municipal Utilities, and 21.1% of the cost to the wastewater fund. Again, interest rate proposed at 4.1%, payable over eight years. Project was assessed per our current special assessment policy, and the entire assessment role is included in the packet, and I can answer any questions if we have them.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Open up for any input as part of this public hearing. Anyone wish to speak as part of this public hearing? Council, have any questions?
I, the only comment I have is that the project was amazing, the difference in the, in the road and the whole thing out there. I hope the, the people that are there and utilizing it are, are as happy with it as, as, I mean, I think it turned out really well. So hopefully, the, the users there on a regular basis are, are happy with it all. So I think it was a really good improvement.
Good comment, and it certainly is a, a project that will, it was built to last.
Yeah, it's, that should be one of those 50-year bones, I hope.
Right.
We hope.
We hope. Input as part of the public hearing from the council? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Are there any questions about that resolution? If not, is there a motion?
I move the resolution.
Motion by Craig, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And then our final, final public hearing this evening is on West Lyon Street College, the first reconstruction project. Once again, Jason Anderson, I'll ask you to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also a 2022 construction season project. The reconstruction of a block between, of West Lyon Street between College Drive and North First Street included water main and sanitary sewer and storm sewer work, as well as the street. Total cost, $467,283. Of those costs, 13.2% is assessed to property owners, 40.8% city participation, 3.1% surface water management utility, 28.1% Marshall Municipal Utilities, and 14.8% of the cost wastewater utility funded. Again, interest rate 4.1% payable over eight years is being proposed. Project was also assessed in accordance with our current special assessment policy. You have the full assessment role and resolution in the packet, and I'm happy to address questions.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We'll open it up for public comment as part of this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak as part of this public Are there any questions that the council has? I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I just want to make a quick comment. And, and after winter like we had this last winter, by keeping up with our roads, I know they cost money, they cost assessments, but our roads are in good shape. As you guys know, I travel, our communities where potholes are horrible. We're not experiencing that in Marshall. So I know these cost money, I understand that, but we have excellent infrastructure, Marshall, and it does save us money on car repairs. For anybody that has traveled, just go to St. Paul, Minneapolis, Duluth, Venkato, their roads are horrible with potholes this spring because of the winter. We don't have that.
And we have a very good Public Works and Street Department that is on top of it.
Yep, it is.
Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. Do we have a motion on the table?
No, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
By Jim, second.
Me.
By Steve, to close the public hearing. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment on West Lyon Street. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Motion by Craig.
A second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Okay, we'll move then to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda this evening. We'll bring them up on the screen, and they include, from Sounds of Summer, call for a public hearing on the private use of public streets and parking lots for the Sounds of Summer. Dates of that will be August 18th to 20, 20th, 2023. The introduction of the ordinance on the general business district and call for a public hearing. Consider the amendment for the surface water management for the city of Marshall. This is the introduction of the ordinance. The request for a map amendment by First Premier Bank. Location's 1420 East College Drive. That's the mall property. The request for the map adjustment, map amendment for Minnesota State Armory Building Commission. Location would be 1103 Michigan Road. That's in the Commerce Industrial Park. Setting the public hearing date for the MS4 permit program summary of the 2022 activities that's required by state statute. Consider the approval of the gambling permit for the American Legion at the Red Baron Arena. Consider the approval of the contract between Southwest Sanitation and the Red Baron Arena and Expo. Consider the approval of Red Baron Arena and Expo sponsorship agreement with S M S U. The acceptance of funding from the Soil and Water Conservation District for the Pollinator Program. A resolution approving the petition and waiver agreement with Nakamas Enterprises and delegating authority for the final resolution and the execution of the agreement. This is for the parking lot improvement. Consider the approval of memorandum of agreements between the city and the unions approving Juneteenth as a holiday effective 2023. Consider the approval of the amendments of the personnel policy adding Juneteenth as a holiday effective 2023. This was actually part of legislation that has passed in this most recent session. And consider the approval of the bills in the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve all of those items on the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Okay, we'll move then to the 2023 legislative update. Do we have Marty on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. So there, there's a number of things that, that will be discussed here. So Marty Seifert with Flaherty and Hood, who has represented in a very well manner, the interests of the city of Marshall, specifically on the request for the sales tax extension. He will give a, a report of that legislative activity. Probably you also want to talk about local government aid. You may want to talk about the bonding request for the Merit Center, and there's probably other things, Marty, that you will be able to cover. And then Pam Whitmore will give a update on the cannabis legislation and some of the implementation things that will be now the responsibility of the city that we'll have to take care of. Sharon, did you want to add?
Stephen also has handouts.
Great. Okay. So with that, Marty, I'm going to let you start, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Very well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Marty Seifert with Flaherty and Hood, resident of Marshall, back again, starting tomorrow when I get done with all the variety of things I have to do button up here in St. Paul. But was pleased to work on the sales tax issue for the city of Marshall, which you guys hired our firm to do, and I was the lead person to work on that for the firm. It's been a roller coaster, to say the least, the last two years on this issue. Obviously, last year, the tax bill, it was in the tax bill, but the tax bill never got brought up for a vote. So everything in the tax bill went down in flames, including our provision. So this year, we came back. Our local lawmakers sponsored the bill. The unique thing is the House of Representatives did not include any local option sales taxes in their bill. The committee chair is absolutely opposed to doing them. So no one received a hearing, and no one was in the House bill. So when they did the, the side-by-sides of the Senate provisions, the House provisions, and what they had in common, it was all blank on the House side. No fault of, of our legislator, but just because the House Tax Chair didn't want to have anything. So therefore, it defaulted to whatever the Senate wanted. Senator Deems worked on the legislation quite extensively, got it worded with the city the way they kind of wanted it, which would be the, the referendum of approval would be this year. I didn't have a ton of involvement in some of those details, but in discussion, I know you may discuss this with each other and so forth, but you know, with inflation at the rate it is, if you lose another year, it could be $1 million, $2 million, $3 million of cost to the taxpayers by delaying this project any longer. So the thought process was saving the taxpayers a lot of money by moving the election. And then the ballot question will have to be obviously approved by the city council, and your city attorney will work with you on that. The authorizing legislation is for the Aquatic Center. It is limited to that. It is not a tax increase, but rather an extension of the current sales tax as the bonds are de-feasted for the Red Baron Arena. And I think some of you remember, you know, when that went through, there's always estimates on sales tax collections. Well, in the meantime, we built, you know, Hobby Lobby is open, Ashley Furniture is open. I don't know if Menards was open under those collection estimates or not, but Marshall has a lot of things going on now that it didn't have going on when the Red Baron Arena was first authorized. So the sales tax collections have been robust. And the discussion, of course, around the sales tax was, well, is this, you know, you have other people outside of Marshall paying the sales taxes. Is that fair? But I think if you look at the Marshall Aquatic Center, it is a regional facility. There is not a swimming pool in Ghent, Green Valley, Cottonwood, Russell, Lind, Milroy, Darben. So if you want to have your kids learn to swim, if you want to have your family provide recreation, obviously, none of the townships have swimming pools, you have to go to Marshall. I mean, that's where you go for this type of recreation and, and this type of facility. So it, it is a regional project. I think the lawmakers responded to that, that this isn't only the people at Marshall paying for this. Everybody will have a uniform entrance fee, and it'll be a nice facility. It'll have a lazy river. It'll be ADA compliant. It'll have a lot of other features to move it into the 21st century as compared to our pool, which I think is the second oldest in the state. So, long story short, the Senate had it in their bill. It was all of the sales taxes, for the most part, were adopted by the conference committee, and the tax bill was approved by the legislature the last five days of session, and it is awaiting the governor's signature. We're expecting it to be signed by Friday. He has three days from when it's presented to him to sign or veto a bill. He's expected to sign it. Both of our legislators deserve to be commended for working very hard and diligently. On the local government aid issue, I believe that there's a handout. We were able, as a firm, to get an increase in local government aid to update the formula, and it'll be a fairly significant increase compared to, to other years, and that is an ongoing expenditure. And then the Merit Center, you know, and I was hired to work on the sales tax, but I think all of you know I keep an eye on anything related to kind of my old district, I guess you'd say. And so the bonding bill, which had failed earlier in session, got brought back up the last day of session. They cobbled together a variety of projects. One of them is the Merit Center in Marshall. We got 50% of what we asked for, 2.25 million, I believe, is what the request was double that. So you'll have to have a discussion on, do you phase this, or how do you handle that? But as I usually tell the legislators, we'll take whatever money you can give us and figure it out and probably come back for the other portion of it later. The Merit Center's been around for a long, long time when I was there, when it was first built. So that was approved yesterday on the last day of session, and the governor is expected to sign that into law. So those dollars will be flowing to Marshall as well. So I didn't want to take too much of your time, but I'm happy to take questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Marty. Thank you for your, your work. And as you said, you did not only what, what we asked you to do, you went over and above, beyond, and paid attention to other things like LGA and like the, the bonding bill and other things. So thank you for your, for your work. I'll open up for any questions or comments for Marty.
I just, I just want to echo what Mayor Burns said, Marty. Thanks a lot. You know, we were, had the privilege of working with you late last fall or early winter on some of this down in St. Paul. And just thanks a lot for, for your knowledge and experience and applying it and really supporting what we're doing here. We, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add, I did hand out something on the Merit Center. It's a little bit dated. It was an original bonding request, but the request from the city was 4.4 million, and Marty was nearly correct. We were received 2.35. And we will have staff discussion, maybe some discussions with Marty, too, on how best to go forward. We could phase it, maybe do one or the other. It included the gun range and a burn structure. And we'll see what our public safety director kind of comes up with, and, and we'll talk legislatively, too. I know there's, starting on 2024 bonding requests. I think that's been put out now, a deadline in June, so.
Any other input for Mr. Seifert?
And I want to thank Bob and Sharon for putting up with me sending text messages at 6:30 as I'm, you know, getting ready to go to mass, and here, here's some legislation popping through and, and bugging them at 11 o'clock at night, or whatever time of the day. So good appreciation for your mayor and your city administrator for always being responsive. When I've had emails and text messages going out Saturday, Sunday, late at night, early morning, they, they always are, are right on it, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Marty. You're welcome to stay on. We will move now the discussion to talk about recreational marijuana and the cannabis bill. City Attorney Pam Whitmore. Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marty probably could cover this one as well, I would imagine. He's probably heard a lot about it. So as we, we've been giving you the heads up about the legislature this year has had significant work done on cannabis. And so as you recall, in 2022, the legislature passed the ability and made legal what they call lower-level products. At that time, it was THC, identified as THC edible-type products. And now, this new bill, they are, have renamed those to be lower potency hemp edibles. And so, as you will likely recall, you all put in a moratorium in place that expires on July 22nd, which is relevant to the sale of any of those lower-level THC products. So fast forward to this year, the session passed a 320-page bill, and it, so we are getting through it. You will be seeing a memo from me that outlines it. Hopefully, it will be less than 320 pages for me to explain it all.
You're going to boil it down that far?
Maybe to, maybe to 310. So, but basically, what it does is that it sets up these products as a higher-level potency product, and the lower-level potency product sets that is legal today, which, again, you have a moratorium on. And so these higher-level products, they have legalized them, and the bill covers everything from use to home. from use to home, to what you can have at home, to what public safety can do, to different employment, you know, in your employment setting. So it really is an expansive bill that covers a lot of different areas. It includes also some revenue sharing. So they're putting a tax on this and then providing some sharing of the revenue to local government for that as well. But the part that cities need to be thinking about with respect to their interactions with public and the business piece of it is that there are up to 14 different types of licenses that are being created, that have been created under this bill. And so as a part of that, about 12 of those 14 relate to that higher-level potency products. And there's two that is the lower potency hemp retail and then manufacturing. So those are the two lower-level ones. So that's what it does. And it really does take away the ability for cities to do much with respect to these products. They have set up a state licensing agency that, if you go on the website, it's up, but it's not necessarily running. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at it, but it's the Office of Cannabis Management, and it just has very basic information. But you can see what it looks like. And the process will be that people, business owners or potential business owners, apply directly to that Office of Cannabis Management. Oh, thank you, whoever put that up there. And then that office will send the cities, the applications they get. Cities will have 30 days to comment on whether the land use request of where it's being requested complies with what the city's zoning is. In addition to that, the bill has given cities the ability to put on some reasonable time, place, and manner. And they have not defined specifically what that is, but they have made some suggestions and given the authority for up to 1,000 feet. If the city so chooses, they can put restrictions in that, and it's only specific to the retailers. So keep in mind that those licenses are, some of them are distributors, some of them are transporters, some of them are cultivators, some of them are manufacturers. So that is just with respect to the application that goes to the city and then us giving input to the Office of Cannabis Management about just our regular zoning, what district, that kind of stuff. With respect to retailers, the city can have a discussion and put ordinances in place with respect to whether we are going to regulate distances from any of these retailers. And so those distances are allowed up to 1,000 feet from a school. But I will keep in mind, school has not been defined. You think that that would be something that is clear. However, in one of my other cities, before this, we actually had an issue about what the definition of school is, because the education code is like four different chapters in the state law, and there's not really a good definition of what school means. We can also regulate up to 500 feet from daycares, again, not defined. So we don't know if that's corporate daycares. We don't know if that's in-home daycares. We don't know what that means. Residential treatment facilities, and then any public space, really, I think it's parks that has an attraction that youth use or attracted to. So, you know, I think the purpose is, you know, like where there's ball fields or that kind of thing. So that's one thing that cities can talk about, setting regulations up with respect to those retailers. The other thing is that with respect to those retail license, again, only the retail license, the legislature has given cities the ability to decide whether they want to grant a limited number of licenses based on the population of the city. So for every 12,500 people in a city, you can have, limit it to one. You can't prohibit, you can never, you can't prohibit. It's very clear in there. What is not clear is, let's say you have 15,000 people, and you're not up to 25,000. So are you at one or two? Because you're over that 12.5, but you're under 25. So again, another thing that we need to wait and learn from the Office of Cannabis Management. So the reason why I set that stage is there's a lot of unanswered questions with respect to what some of this means. The effective date of the bill for these 320 pages, there are different effective dates depending on different things. So for example, for use, just personal use, that goes into effect August 1st. For the Office of Cannabis Management, that gets established July 1st, but they have to go through rulemaking. They've given them expedited rulemaking abilities, which technically, they could, if they got their act all together, possibly have rules within 30 days because they don't have to have the hearing requirements. It's probably not going to happen. You know, it's probably not going to be for a while until they start granting licenses, but we don't have any control over that. And so there is, I think, and I'm looking for direction from council, I have make this recommendation, and are giving the heads up that I'll probably make this recommendation, I'm making it, that for your June meetings, I think that the council should consider, you know, repealing this ordinance, the interim ordinance that's in existence, which is supposed to expire July 22nd anyway, and putting a new interim ordinance in place to have that time for the Office of Cannabis Management to answer some of these questions so that you can know what's going to work for the city of Marshall. Certainly, the bill is very clear, we can't prohibit this. And this would, again, only be with respect to selling and the retailers. And we can put a pause on the manufacturing and transporting also to see what the license structure looks like. But the use is not, we can't touch the use. So that's going to go into effect August 1st regardless, and home possession, that goes into effect as well. So that's what you should expect to see from me in August, or I mean, in the next, in our June meetings. And I have, like I said, I have a memo that explains the bill in more detail that you'll be getting in the next week or so. The other thing I want to note is that there is a specific exception that goes into effect the day after the governor signs, which is allowing the sale of the lower-level products in beverage form in liquor stores. So that goes into effect right away. It is, the way that your current ordinance, moratorium ordinances is drafted and written and passed, it probably prohibits that. If that's something that the council wants to consider to allow, since it's in effect the day after the bill gets signed, we can incorporate that language in the repeal of the current ordinance and the, as you review the adoption of an interim ordinance, if you choose to do that. So that concludes my summary. I'm open for questions, if you have any questions about.
Thank you, Pam, for your summary, and thank you for your very good recommendations. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple questions, and maybe a question and then a comment.
Yep.
So as I understand it, with the 12,000, 12,500, so the minimum are one, okay?
Correct.
We could theoretically treat that the same way we treat our off-sale liquor store. Then we, could we be the licensed, the city?
So you would have to follow the same rules? So you would apply?
Okay.
You would apply. So that would be then up to that Office of Cannabis Management, who they license and that.
And that's assuming that 12.5 means one, even though we're 13.6 or 13.12.
Right. Yeah, that it doesn't mean two.
And Mr. Mayor, council member, if the city wants to have more than one?
You could.
Certainly can.
Sure.
So if the city would like to provide for the ability for more than just the municipal liquor as they apply, again, it's up to the Office of Cannabis Management, so. But you, as a city, don't have to limit it to one.
Right. Okay. So that was kind of question slash comment or observation. And then, so drilling down a little bit, 342.09 subdivision two talks about home cultivation of cannabis, which is a little bit different. I mean, it's a little, kind of like the brewmaster here for the home piece. And so I just want people aware of that, that this not only opens up the commercial production, manufacture, and sale, it also applies to home growth. And there's some limits on here, but they're not terrible limits. You know, so it just kind of gets back to a family member of mine's significant other years ago, mixing them in the tomato plants, and it looks like the birds have finally come home to roost. So I just want to say that there's, you know, in my 48 years of legal adulthood, we always kind of knew that the day was coming, never knew what it was going to look like. But I really appreciate the step back and the thought. There's been an awful lot of thought going into the 300-plus pages of legislation, and thank you for boiling this out for us. And I just hope, as a city, as the city leaders, we take a nice, deep breath and step back and really think about this and make smart decisions that are going to be good long-term for the community so that, you know, when this is brought in, it's brought in with reason and stuff, and not panic and frantic or volley because, or folly, because there's opportunity here. And it doesn't matter what my or our personal opinions on it are at all, it's that, you know, this is the legislation, and we need to pilot it the best way we can for the community.
Thank you, Craig. Other input?
We had this discussion at Allen O about a week ago, and the recommendation from Allen O was to repeal the current moratorium and put a new one on, such as where Pam was at that meeting. So we can do that, Craig, is we can take our six, seven, eight months. I know that the consensus of Allen O was not to drag our feet, because you're correct, it's coming.
Yeah.
It's not coming, it's here.
It's the law, no.
But to give Eric the opportunity to sell it at our liquor store, because it is a product that is.
Well, that's one part of the product.
Well, one part of it, but it gives us the opportunity to start selling that as early as Memorial Day, I think, is when he's planning on signing this bill. Correct?
That's correct. But then we would need to have that direction from council if you want to reflect that the lower-level products can be made available outside of that moratorium.
But that was the recommendation from Allen O. Now, if anybody has any other input?
Any other comments from the council or questions?
Appreciate all the work.
Pam, do you need any further direction from the council?
So I just want to confirm that with respect, you'd like to see a draft of an interim ordinance with the repeal of the current one. And the draft of the interim ordinance relates to all products that are covered, including the lower potency products with the carve-out for liquor store?
I think so.
I think that's appropriate.
With the carve-out for liquor store.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the question came in, too, so what does that do for like the microbrewery in town?
I was just asking, for like Bra Brothers.
Right.
Because when you say retail, is Bra Brothers considered retail? Because they could technically now make it. Are they considered retail, or?
So there's a license, they would be licensed as, and it's a, it depends on what the product is. But with respect to those licenses, they need to go through the Office of Cannabis Management.
But you can currently make the low-level THC cider, per se.
Correct.
Now, when we remove this moratorium, does that now give them the opportunity to get into that business? Because that's become a fairly lucrative business in the last year for a lot of microbreweries.
The moratorium that we put in place last July did not address distribution, did not address manufacturing, and only addressed the retail operation. And in fact, as it relates to municipal liquor stores, it's questionable whether it even affected that, because municipal liquor stores were prohibited under last year's legislation to market and retail THC-enhanced beverages. So now with the new legislation, that has been opened up. So I think you could actually make the argument that municipal liquor stores weren't included on our moratorium last year because it wasn't allowed in the legislation.
So that's, so I just, I can draft that. That way, I just wanted to confirm that that's the direction that I'm getting. And the council should keep in mind, too, that if the Office of Cannabis Management comes through quickly with its rules and its rulemaking, and the council decides they want to repeal the interim ordinance because we are able to respond more quickly, it certainly doesn't have to be in place for a full year. It's just giving us the opportunity right now to find out how these rules are coming down and what the parameters are going to be.
The recommendation from Allen O was not to leave them place, but for to stay in pace with this all.
Right.
So it's law, and also stay in pace with law, and hopefully capture some of the business and gain the tax.
Any other questions for Pam or any other comments you wanted to make?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move then to Agenda Number 21. This would be the Block 100 right-of-way encroachment agreement as relates to a sidewalk beside the new apartment complex. Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. With the Block 100 apartment building being constructed at the corner of Lyon Street and North First nearing completion, the contractors reached out to city staff to discuss the installation of the sidewalk along Lyon Street. There's a segment of sidewalk that's still not been installed. The contractor wishes to install the sidewalk up against the back of the curb on Lyon Street as opposed to up against the building along the right-of-way line. Purpose for the request is that they have apartments that come out on that ground level, and they would prefer not to have the sidewalk right up against those apartment windows. So staff believed it was a reasonable request. The outstanding item at hand is that they would likely be landscaping the city's right-of-way. They talked about possibly mulch, possibly rock, possibly flowers or other enhancements. Since that is the city's property, we did reach out to city attorney and discuss agreement. So you do have an agreement in the packet for your consideration that would allow the landscaping of the city's right-of-way. The agreement simply outlines the fact, and both parties acknowledge that it's the city's property, it's our right-of-way, and if we damage the landscaping, we're not responsible for it. So with that, city staff would recommend that we enter into this agreement, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, snow removal on those blocks. Now, we load out Lyon Street, but not First Street, correct?
We do load out Lyon Street. I believe we load out the one block of First Street. I could be wrong.
So this would be, I mean, this would still be very functional with the way that we manage snow now, so it's not going to create a new workflow for snow removal?
Correct. It should be manageable. The request that city staff made to the contractor was that instead of a five-foot sidewalk, if you're going back of curb, we'd like to see an eight-foot sidewalk.
Okay. And that should still give them plenty of room for the landscape between the sidewalk and the building that they're looking for?
Yes. The agreement is seven and a half feet.
Okay.
And the contractor recently reached out and indicated they may just choose to make it grass, at which case we really probably don't need an agreement. But either way, it's good to have it in place, and then we have the flexibility to work with them.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have the agreement, is there a motion to approve the encroachment agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
By Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. Agenda Number 22, Consider the Agreement for the Transfer of Airport Federal Entitlement Funds to Dodge Center and Authorize the Execution and Filing of the FAA Form. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Brief background on the entitlement funds, they're airport improvement program dollars. The city marshal receives $150,000 annually of these improvement dollars. We're only allowed to bank four years' worth of funds, which caps us at $600,000. You may remember, we had planned to utilize these funds for the SRE building at the airport. We had already transferred out some funds. We planned to transfer them in and utilize a large share of the dollars on the project. We did not award the project when we bid it a few months back. So we now have funds set to expire again. So thankfully, Dodge Center, whom we have already done a transfer with, is willing to take another year's worth of our allocations and agree to transfer them back at a later date. We will be working with TKDA end of this year. We will be working with TKDA end of this year to try to bid the project again and look for more competitive numbers. This would set us up to transfer the dollars back in when we're ready to use them. I can answer any questions if we have them.
Are there any questions for Jason? Craig?
Sorry, Jason, just to make sure that I'm good on the math now. So then a year from now or the end of this year, now we're looking at seven fifty instead of six hundred, correct?
I think we're actually at nine hundred.
Okay. So it's, we're not, we're not just floating yet, we're actually still building, we're still building the, the, the additional funds that we can direct towards the, the maintenance building.
It's getting a little hard to track, but we do rely on TKDA for this part. But I believe we're up to nine hundred. We had a transfer to another community that slips my mind, but.
Right.
Yes.
Wasseco or one of those.
I think it was Wasseco.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
That was also my question. Thank you, Craig, for asking it.
Any other questions? Steve?
Do we ever, I mean, is there any interest on this money that we're loaning to people or is it just no interest, here's your money because we can't by law have it?
No interest. We're just, I guess, happy that we have an outlet for it and we're able to bank it and, and use it when we're ready.
So when they get audited, they're just holding it for a guy?
You know, in a, in a perfect world, I would just say that in a perfect world, it would be nice if the FAA would allow us to store more of the funds.
Well, sure.
Unfortunately, that's not the case. They do have this transfer process though.
I think truly it's just the allocation that is.
If we don't transfer it, we lose it, correct?
Correct.
I mean, seriously, it, what's nice about it, and I'm sure why, why FAA and MINDOT tolerate this, is the fact that the money continues to work and you guys in your neighborhood figure out how to, how to make it work. But the funds are getting used, they're just not, we're not, it's not using our funds right now, but we'll use them later. It's kind of the wimpy thing.
Is there, is there any risk that Dodge Center or Wasseco or whoever we have gotten plan poorly and we need our money back and they don't have it?
I, I suppose there is, that we do have a signed agreement between both entities. I, I've, I've never heard of these.
A default.
Yeah, these being broken, but I suppose there is that risk.
We don't typically load out more than one year per agreement though, correct? So we're basically getting their twenty-three money for letting them take our twenty-two money is kind of how it works. So they're just really handing us next year's funds. It's not like they have to come up with it, we're just getting what they would get, so.
Right.
Correct. We're transferring out our oldest money, if you will, our 2020 entitlements.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda number twenty-three, consider the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Bonds Series 2023A. I'll call on EJ Moberg, our Director of Administrative Services, and Michaela Hewitt is all, our financial advisor is also available too. EJ?
Thank you. So this morning at ten o'clock was our, our bond sale, which I'll have Michaela go through a PowerPoint here momentarily. Just wanted to relay that, the updated resolution, there is a sample resolution in the packet for tonight. The updated numbers came, but most, most recent revision came about four thirty this afternoon with the results. Ultimately, with our $5,210,000 issuance, we were able to take a portion of a premium that was offered to lower our par amount to $4,790,000. So we saved $420,000 right off the bat with our par value of the bonds with the sale. So I just wanted to highlight that. Right now, I'll turn it over to Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to, to go through the process that we went through.
Welcome, Michaela.
Thank you.
Thank you, EJ.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm here to present the results of the, both the bond sale from earlier today as well as the review of the credit rating process that was done in conjunction with the bond issuance. So this slide just shows you the five-year history of the interest rates. As we all know, we hit the bottom about, you know, late, no, 2021, they've been climbing. But actually, when we're looking at the rates for today that we'll go through, they were not too much higher than a year ago. I think we were at 2.8-ish last year and we'll get into the results of this year. So you'll see it's been kind of high-low and where this was a good week, a good week in the market for the bond issuance. Again, the final par amount of the bonds is 4.79 million and the proceeds is, as outlined in your resolution, were to finance the street reconstruction project that was described in your five-year street reconstruction plan that had been adopted by council at their April eleventh meeting. And the project specifically included the North Third Street, West Lyon Street Downtown Reconstruction Project. The next purpose was the, for public improvements, including parking lot improvements and improvements to several of the city's parks, including Independence Park, Legion Field, and the Amateur Sports Center. And the third purpose was to finance Legion Field stormwater improvements consistent with pa, excuse me, consistent with past practice. The bonds were issued as, with a ten-year term. And just for comparison of the interest rates, when we presented the, the, the set sale, authorizing the sale of the bonds back on April 26th, the estimated true interest cost at that time was 3.313%. We updated it yesterday to see where rates might be and they were at 3.179%. And a slight, about fifteen basis points less than what we had initially assumed back in April. With the sale of the bonds, the city did receive five bids and the low bid was from Piper Sandler and Company. The actual results of their bid was 3.263 and the range of the five bids was between 3.26 and 3.49%. Again, the par amount of the bonds was reduced from 5.2 down to 4.79 due to the premium that was offered with the, the bid. We also went through the rating process with Standard and Poor's. And what is the purpose of the rating? It's really to provide a measurement of the city's financial strength and ability to make debt payments in a timely fashion. It also indicates a potential likelihood of any default on city obligations. So the higher the interest, or, excuse me, the higher the rating, the less likely of a default. And the less likely of a default, the lower the interest rate is that the investors will accept and really, because it's a lower return on investment for less risk. So the city was, their bond rating was reaffirmed at a double A with a stable outlook. And that was primarily based on the new development that's continuing to occur, high reserves and good management policies and practices of the city. There are comments within the rating report. And again, this is really consistent with, with the rating the city had received in 2022. The, the categories that they look at, adequate economy, and this is based on the below-average incomes, which does incorporate the student population. However, balancing that is strong commercial and residential development that's underway and also noting that SMU is a stabilizing institution in the community. Again, the city has strong management practice, including strong financial policies and practices. There's sound budgeting, quarterly budget, actual and monthly investment reports to city council, as well as plans to both the CIP, capital improvement planning, as well as foreseeing long-range financial planning for the next five to 10 years. Also, the strong budgetary performance, the high general fund reserves that's resulting from annual surpluses is, is providing high, high rating. Very strong budgetary flexibility, maintaining the fund balance policy of five months of the following year's expenditures. And then lastly, although there are higher levels of debt, the rapid debt amortization of maintaining that 10 years or less is, is balancing the level of debt. The net debt for this year is 19.9%. Again, that rapid amortization with 81% of the debt retiring within 10 years. So we always, they always provide what could increase or decrease the rating, what could increase it. If the city's market value and income indicators were to materially improve over the next two years, that could result in a potential increase in the rating. And then the downside, they could look at reducing the rating if the city's reserves were closer to their fund balance policy minimums, whether there's budgetary performance or one-time capital expenditures. There was conversation of, of the city's strong budgetary practice at this point. Also, if there are some changes to any of the taxpayer and employee challenges within the community. But overall, as, as I said, the, the rating was double A with a stable outlook. So that I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to the, the authorizing resolution, the award of the, the bonds or the credit rating.
Thank you. Questions? EJ, any final comments you have?
Nope. So the next step would just be to authorize the approval of the resolution with the updated numbers from this afternoon to authorize the sale.
And the, the sale price, the interest rate is actually probably more favorable than what we would have anticipated even six months ago. So thank you for your work on this. I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move the resolution awarding the sale of the General Obligation Bond Series 2023A.
I'd second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to agenda number twenty-four, the proposed 2024 budget timeline. EJ?
Thank you. Similar to a discussion we had last year, just wanted to try to work to get some work session dates and a special meeting date on the calendar for everyone relating to, to the 2024 budget in this case. The first one would be July 25th is proposed, would be the community organization requests. It'd be a work session starting, proposed to start at 4:00 PM. That's before the normal council meeting. The second one is August 22nd, which would be the second meeting of August, a work session starting at three. That would entail going over the capital, operating and personnel budgets as proposed at that point to go through that. The third one is October 10th at four, would be a work session just to go over the health and dental insurance before they're adopted at the next council meeting on the 24th or at the second meeting of that month. Third one would be the second meeting of November after council to do a work session to go over the proposed levian budgets. Prior to our truth and taxation meeting, which is proposed then for the following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, that gives us a chance to go over where we're at for our budget at, at the last meeting in November, have the truth and taxation meeting on December 5th, and then have another one-week gap in case, in case the public brings something forward for us to look at before the budget would ultimately, you know, be up for adoption on December 12th is the idea. So the only special meeting or new meeting would be the December 5th for the truth and taxation meeting, which we're required to hold. I like to, I personally have the concept of having it be a separate meeting from when the budget would be approved, just so if there is something brought forward, we have a chance to investigate or look at those options. But in the past, I know you have done them on the same night as well. So I want to kind of put it up for discussion of what may be workable for the council.
Okay. Input from the council?
I, I already told EJ, I will not be here August 22nd. It's my anniversary and I'm going to keep my wife happy, not you guys.
I won't, I won't be here either. We're on vacation. My mom is taking us on a cruise.
So that, that two of us missing, we should maybe look at changing the 22nd.
The, I, there's a possibility I likely will not be in attendance on July 25th, but the President Pro Tem could run that meeting.
I believe there's a conflict for the first meeting of September as well, as far as, I believe that's when our city administrator is not, is going to be absent that meeting.
But the 29th?
August, August 29th would work for me. Is that what you meant?
To do a special meeting? Sure.
Yeah.
You okay?
Would you like, would you like, since it's not a council meeting night, do you want to go back to a later time period as a start, since it's just work session just for that? Does it work better for people, is what I'm asking, to do a 5:30 start or?
Right. Or five, yeah.
Or five or whatever?
Five or 5:30?
Sure.
That, that works.
Any other input? EJ, you have what you need?
Just send, send us revised dates, please.
Will do.
Just the one, August 28th.
I heard five or 5:30. Is there a consensus of?
5:30 would be much better.
5:30?
Otherwise, I will not, no way will I be here on time.
Maybe just like Schaefer.
I could be.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just early for a later meeting.
With that, we'll move then to agenda number twenty-five. This is the Commission Board of the Asian Reports. Craig?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Planning Commission met May 10th, Wednesday after our last meeting here. We discussed three of the ordinances that were map amendments and an ordinance amendment that we passed in the consent agenda. Not a lot of comments and it went very smoothly during the planning commission as well. So EDA met last Wednesday. We heard from UCAP representative Jeff Gladys about funding available through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency that UCAP is applying for. And he has asked the EDA, or they have asked the EDA if we'd consider giving or selling lots and that we have yet to discuss now. But it will be something to look forward to. The Main Street Revitalization Grant applications are due June 1st. Jim, was it Jim that I'd mentioned, the QuickTrip, the sale? They want to demo both sites, it sounds like, this summer up for QuickTrip or the two garage, or gas station sites. So that's just kind of a quick recap. We covered a lot.
Thank you, Amanda. The Southwest Regional Development Commission had their full commission meeting. It was actually held in Ivanhoe. Steve was also in attendance. The, in addition to the business meeting, the presentation was by Carrie Bendix from the local workforce council on regional labor availability, very good data. She's a very good source of information and the workforce center is a very good resource for this community. John?
MMU met last week. They had their audit and their finding was a clean audit. It did show that Marshall and its citizens were to pay, I'm reading this, were to pay average electrical rates in the state. We would have to pay $14 million more for the electricity bills over the year. This is a huge economic advantage to our city and affect our city and our citizens have to pay $14 million less for power. The Missouri River Energy Services had its annual meeting. It was a great year for the company with $32 million in profit, $12 million over budget, and a new CEO is in place. Marshall Solar Plus will be breaking ground in August, this August, with a scheduled completion fall of 2024. New 16-inch valves were replaced in the water treatment plant to allow for more robust distribution response to maintenance and emergencies. Lyon and Third Street replacement project moving forward. So far, seven lead service water lines have been replaced. The turbine electric over hydraulic starter package with, with a successful starting last week, additional testing must be done before fully operational. Lyon and Third Street project is moving forward. New electrical pickup is to be delivered in June. We will use the truck to advertise electric vehicle charger rebate program. Customer service, a new portal software is nearing release for MMU customers with new web-based access to a customer's electric and water meters. MMU will provide electric and water usage information for a customer's phone or personal computer. And it was the last commission meeting for Scott Sogstad. For the last 10 years, Scott has served on the utility commission, representing the city of Marshall and our citizens. They thank Scott for his service to this community and for the thousands of hours he has given serving on this commission. Thanks for all you have done to make MMU what it is today. That's it.
Thank you, John. Steve?
DEI met, and I wasn't here last time, so I'm going to report it all. I missed. Juneteenth celebration is June 19th. I believe it will be over at Justice Park and symbolic in that. So if you are free that night, go and attend. World Cafe worked on some actions based on the data, so that information will be released at all the different events this summer, including Juneteenth. The library, we met and they talked about that outreach position and possibly talking about turning into a volunteer position and so that way there doesn't have to be money that's involved in that. They did draft a budget, so they're about 5.3% over budget. A lot of it is new computers. So the county also wanted Michelle to go back and kind of revise it and try to bring it down. So, so we'll see. And then CVB, kind of the biggest thing was Fairbanks Ice Dogs and Maha Partnership. They kind of wanted to see if a CVB wanted a more of a partnership in that to help bring costs down. And also considering hiring a sales contractor to be able to bring more business to the Red Baron Center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Steve? Thank you, Steve. Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Nothing.
Steve?
Nothing here.
Amanda?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing.
Too late. Go ahead.
Just, I want to say that I appreciate the special vehicle licensing and the utilization of UTVs, and I don't know if the number's up this year from last year. I think last year we had 40 licensed.
We're about the same.
About the same. One negative thing, and this is kind of a word out to our citizenry, there, if you have a UTV and you want to use it in Marshall, you can't just use it because it's licensed in Minnesota. It needs a special vehicle use permit in Marshall, and it has to have turn signals and a horn. And I've noticed a few youngsters now taking advantage of the pleasure of riding UTVs around town, but I don't think the ones that I've been observing recently meet it. I didn't take, they were driving very respectfully, even though I think they were probably violating our ordinance. I did not call the non-emergency number at the law enforcement center because I didn't want to rat them out, and I want to do this piece to send a message to their parents that, hey, make sure you're doing this right so you don't have your children get a relationship with our fine law enforcement the wrong way. It doesn't take that much to put the proper things on your UTV and get the permit. It's actually pretty easy. So let's not spoil it for anybody. And I just want to stop there.
Thank you, Craig. Jim?
I have nothing after Craig.
Steve?
Were we doing appointments for the board commission?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yep.
Okay.
I'll come back to that.
Okay. Just, the Gruffalo walk, so Chief Marshall and Chief Quinton are both going against each other this year. So right now, about three hours ago, the police station is at $252, the fire station's at $212. So the winning team, the other chief, has to wear the Gruffalo costume. So go on the United Way, go and donate, and this is for stuff the bus.
Thank you.
Very good. John?
Nothing.
So earlier this evening, the council did interview or have applicants, conducted interviews for the planning commission, and I'd like to add that to the agenda for appointments. So I'd entertain a motion at this time to amend the agenda to add the appointment for the planning commission.
I move we amend the agenda to add the appointment to the planning commission.
I'd second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? Stephen will do this by voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. So based on the interview from the applicant, I would recommend that Mashoud Abdullah be appointed to a term on the planning commission, and that term would expire, bear with me for a second, a term to expire May 31st, 2026. Offer that as a recommendation to the council. Entertain a motion to affirm.
I'd make a motion to affirm.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Do you want that roll call instead?
Oh, yeah. I can roll call.
So by voice vote, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Nothing.
Jason?
I'll just give a brief update on the Third and Lion construction project, which is moving along nicely. You now see concrete showing up on the one block of Third Street from Maine to Lion, which is great. So I believe the sidewalk, what we call the PAR, the pedestrian access route, the six-foot wide accessible path up against the buildings on both sides of the block is installed. The contractor will be moving, I believe at that last conversation, the plan was to move to curb and gutter and work on that on this block yet this week. I think they'll be next week working on possibly more sidewalk work on the next block. It's a little up in the area. There's still a lot of electrical improvements to be done on this first block, conduits to be put in to feed the streetlights, the lighted bowards, the electrical hookups in the landscaping areas, those sorts of things. So be a lot of activity going on there. It's moving along nicely. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Jason?
It looks good.
If not, city attorney, Pam?
Nothing.
Okay. The remaining items on the agenda for our regular meeting this evening would include the report on our cash and investments, the planning commission minutes, the Public Housing Commission minutes and agenda, our listing of building permits, and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion on that motion? If not, we will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Council will meet in a special session in about eight to 10 minutes, and so we will have a short break at this time.